All right, on the poll call. I have a question.
We have James Carman.
President.
Welcome.
Tom Turk.
Yep.
Jeff Ben Sally.
Yes ma'am.
Kim Sears Hecker.
Here.
Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
And I'm here at Jim Schrader's office.
All right, I'll put the posting. Uh, we'll go to board reorganization. I look officers in 2014 board term. So do I have any nominations for president? I will nominate Tom Turk. I have a second.
Oh.
Two seconds, any discussion? Any other nominations that you've done as well? Seeing none? Uh, individually? You have just a little call. James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Tom?
Olmsted.
Okay. I will now turn it over to you sir. All right. Vice President. You have any nominations for Vice President? I will nominate Isaiah. I'll second. Any other nominations? Hmm? Hearing none? James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Olmsted.
Clerk? I nominate Sandy Orkin. You have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none? James? Sandy?
Yes, or I'm saying.
You can vote for yourself.
Can I just speak up if I will? Abstentions are only for conflict of interest.
Oh.
So I would, I would suggest, and it's not to redo or anything, but abstentions are solely for, really, or primarily for conflict of interest. So the vote.
Yes.
Okay, so. Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Treasurer? Do you have any nominations for Treasurer?
I would like to nominate Kim Sears Hecker.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
I would nominate Jeff Ben Sally.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I think I need to be a parliamentarian here. I think you have to vote on, you have a motion on the table.
Yeah, hold on one first.
Well, I, to be honest, I believe that.
I thought it was you had, you got all of the nominees and then you voted on the first nominee first, and if that passed, then you, then you don't vote on the rest.
It's different for me, I, I just.
I, I'm not gonna try to talk you out of it, but I just, I can clarify that. Okay. Well, we'll go with.
I can respectfully decline the nomination.
Okay. Okay. Any other nominations? Oh, you're very.
I have already nominated, I will read.
I'll second.
Then I will second the nomination for Jeff.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none? James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Time this review on the agenda to. Will you draw your compliancy?
I comply with the statute of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a single justice for all.
Yeah, we need to, we need to strike item B1. Motion to approve the agenda of B1's chicken. Do I have a second? Neil? James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Motion to approve the meeting minutes, April 14, 2014. Do I have a second? James, we have Sandy.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. All right, President's report, I'd like to welcome James Carman to the board. So, congratulations, look forward to working with you. And to thank Jeff for presidency last year. And that's all I got.
Okay, I got a little bit more, but met with Mary Beth Shaw and Todd Dosher in terms of working with, they have this idea, been talking to people about a community center concept, and it's really been mostly people from AZO, although they've included, or invited several Heights people, I think everybody saw fundraiser last Thursday for the, and then the others, and how should I put it, you know, the biggest thing out of that is what they're learning is that in order to get qualified for grants, the community center concept needs to be housed at the, at a school or a government entity. So, that's one of the things they've learned, and I, you know, the last thing I'll just talk about that is, you know, I think it's, you know, really important if they look at, they're looking at middle school only right now is what they can focus on, and I think the important thing is that, you know, it's gotta be a concept that appeals to people and can be supported and something that can, you know, happen for an extended period of time, so. I'll update you, I've been invited to, you know, they've been meeting a couple times a month, and when they get, get a little bit more information, I'll report back to you.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Are you saying that it's geared towards middle school?
That's what they're talking about right now.
And on women's?
Right now, yep. Um, then, as you can tell, we amended the agenda, are struck, right now, we do have a roofer that is interested, that's the second lowest bidding group, Koshak, though I was contacted late today, there have been some developments with the former contractor, and I need to do one more research, which is why we pulled it off the agenda, and I'll get back to everybody. And conduct the interviews from the district office position, that's ready for tonight in Asta. Jason's been working for the position in the middle school high school, and we hope to have something the next week for him. Educator Effectiveness tomorrow, Carol and I are meeting with 10 other staff members, this is our second cohort, and training with Educator Effectiveness, Angie is one of those people, thank you Angie for volunteering. What this is, is a parallel to what the administrators went through, but they would be learning the evaluation process, but would use it as a coaching, or if they're interested in it after getting trained, to see if they'd help coach their peers and provide feedback, so, you know, we've got our administrators who have traditionally done the evaluation process, that's one silo, and the other silo would be, and that's for growth and support, but also a kind of a double dose where, and people talk, end up talking about what does good teaching look like, and hey, you did this in class, how does that work? So, looking forward to that, it's about 40 hours of training, staff will provide some support times, the meeting dates, and go from there. That has to be done prior to June 30th, so. Negotiations of the teachers, we've tentatively set a date of May 19th at 6:30, it's Monday, May 19th at 6:30, working to set up some time with the support staff. Now, just a reminder, just educationally, support staff chose not to recertify, so everything, as a board, we cannot talk about anything in an executive session. Everything is, is open, and.
Support staff?
Support staff.
Right.
Teachers, you know, it's, it's more of a traditional format, where we can exchange and open and then go in, or we can do it all in open too, that's something we, not throwing that out there, but that's a choice. The other, with what support staff has done, that isn't, there is no choice.
Is it for all non-certified, like decertified, or not?
Well, we get two unions.
Right.
So, so what do you ask?
Like, so they, they just said not to recertify?
Correct.
So is that the reason that everything has to be open?
Yep.
Okay, so anybody that wouldn't recertify, we talked about that.
Right, you can't collectively bargain.
Correct. Okay.
Yep. The other thing that I know I mentioned earlier in the year would be the Rock Valley Capital Conference merger. I was at a meeting last week, Asta was at a different one with the principals for Capital Conference. The Rock Valley, it's my understanding, has brought, Rock Valley Conference has brought it forward, that would be to make in a sense a super conference, a conference with three divisions. At my meeting, I don't know how much, was there much discussion about that option at your meeting, Asta?
Uh, everyone rejected.
Everybody rejected it.
Not formally, they just all.
Consensus. Yeah, and they, they didn't have a quorum, so it, but everybody there was against it. And I didn't hear any support for it in my superintendent's meeting, in summary, there was more losers than winners. There's another one out there, Capital Conference adds two schools, which would be Johnson Creek and Deerfield, they've petitioned the conference principals will be voting, that would create two 17 divisions, of course then one of the Capital South has to go north. And so, and both, now Asta, Jason and I support this option. You know, as you know, conference realignment is a continuous, comes up about every five to seven years, you know, for a variety of reasons. I do anticipate, you know, they're, right now WI is kind of focused on realigning the Green Bay area, that's pretty much done, I think the focus will become the Madison area in the near future. So, you know, part of it, by accepting Johnson Creek and Deerfield out of Trailways, you know, shows that we're willing to work with people, and also, how should I put it, gives us a little more hope or opportunity to, to make decisions as opposed to being told what to do. You know, what's still out there, and if you remember a couple years ago with the relief from, for the South Central Conference, their 16 conference, they still want Lodi and Pointon. And they will, I anticipate they will be petitioning, neither one of these real alignments addresses that, and again, that's why WI will get involved. And then, lastly, on the agenda tonight, we have contracts and appointments, as you know, we have not negotiated or agreed upon an increase for 14-15, so these contracts and appointments, when employees, if you vote on yes, when they receive it, they will get their hourly rate for last year printed on it, so, so they'll, let's say, you know, how should I put it, mark out where they made $15.63 an hour last year, and I was an administrative assistant, then that's what I would get, you know, we're hiring you for 14-15, this is your rate until negotiated, and so. But by offering the appointments and the contract, we're also showing that we want people back, et cetera. It's been three years since we have laid off them, you know, support staff or teachers feel good about that, and we'll be recommending the same thing.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't see any public input. All right, District Business Board issues. Designation of one or more public depositories. Page six. Motion that we designate People's Bank Bank of State Bank across planes as a public Okay. Any questions? James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Motion to designate New Sickle Arrow as the official publication of legal notices. Do I have a second? James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Make a motion to retain David R. Friedman's primary legal counsel, authorization for administration to obtain other counsel as needed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Yep?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Oh, that was funny. Appoint a CISA two, CISA two representative. I make a motion to appoint Mr. Carman as CISA two representative. I'll, I'll second that motion. It goes to the newest board member.
We're missing you out.
Any, any other nominees? Isaiah, did you still? Okay.
Unless you want graciously declined.
James?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Absolutely.
Vote yes as well. Welcome to the world of CISA two.
Yep.
All right, committee preferences. So, it's been three years since we've really kinda done, committee, just kinda made whoever the new person was kinda fit into whatever role of the person they took over, so, now we've got basically three new board members that haven't had an opportunity to say, you know what, I really would like to be on this committee or that committee. So I would ask that all the board members take a look and email me with what, what committees you would prefer, with your number one choice being number one, and then kinda further on down the line.
Pick three, maybe.
Yeah, three or four, whatever, you'll be on three.
And traditionally, the treasurer chairs the finance.
Correct.
So that would, that would be, and I'll talk to you down.
Yeah.
About negotiations or employee relations and president, I'll talk to you.
Okay, and then the other one that I like, I would like to keep kinda together is policy, only because there's so much work that goes on in that committee that it's hard to, I don't wanna turn that completely upside down and kinda start over from scratch, so.
Well, you got a lot of work going that's out there yet.
So, I mean, just so everybody's aware of that policy, I wanna kinda keep pretty much together, but if you really have the desire to be on it, please let me know. So, yeah, just shoot me an email, and then I'll make appointments at the next 4B. And if you don't email me, then I'll just kinda plug you in. All right, so, B2, discuss possible action to approve a change in health insurance providers from Dean and Physicians Plus to Unity. Do you want some discussion first? Do you want discussion first, Mark on bill or do you want to do it?
I can kinda present to you, this is kinda part of a two, a three-year plan, I mean, last year we made some adjustments with co-pays, deductibles, we, you know, we know, actually, if we go back two years, when we were under contract, we knew that we were under contract, we'd asked staff if they would consider paying for the increase or negotiate on some things, they said no, we understood, 'cause that's what we negotiated and we agreed upon that. Last year, we set the, set a benchmark that with the increased costs and everything, we tried to keep things at 5% or less, and we held to that last year as an increase. The two things we talked about last year were, okay, eventually we'd have to get to a total takeover to save money, because we could increase office co-pays and that would save a percent or two here and there, but really, a lot of those, you know, we still wanted to provide, I think the overall goal of the insurance committee was to provide a quality program and not change the program as little as possible. And so what this does, although migration isn't easy, we looked at, we got, we bid the regular rates, there are Dean plus, Dean and P plus as is, they came in at 9% and 7%, which is pretty good right now with healthcare reform, half of the increases for this year and probably the next couple of years are basically based on the cost to convert programs and new taxes from healthcare reform. So, with those rates coming in high, we asked M3 to bid out or approach anybody that would bid on us, it was helpful, Group Health Cooperative got the Sauk County program, and that allowed them to come into the Wisconsin Heights area. Previously, by contract, GHC could not provide insurance in Dean County based on some agreements, you know, with other groups, and so that, that was new, and because Group Health Care, or Group Health Co-op got involved, Unity also got involved. And so we had four, four groups to be interested, which, you know, years back, when we were self-insured, we had to self-insure because no one was, was interested with a fully identified program. The best one, what the insurance committee is recommending, is to do Unity, Unity gives us our employees' access to UW Hospital, which P plus was going away from, and P plus docs. Short of going to like a Dean-owned clinic, like the Dean in the West, which you see on the, on the Belt Line, the Dean-owned clinics, you know, most likely you can't, we wouldn't, our employees couldn't go there. So this gave us the greatest coverage. Two other incentives, where they are capping the whoop, or maximum out-of-pocket payment or plan, and so with healthcare reform, with co-pays, or if you went out of network, you could be responsible for a single, single plan of up to $6,350, or a family plan of $12,700. In the Unity plan, that's why they don't call it Affordable Healthcare Act. In the Unity plan, the maxes are at 1,500 and 3,000. They also, although we're not bound to it, this is a one-year contract, we have a 9% max for 15, 16. So we at least have a sense of benchmark of where we can go up and down. By going this way then, we avoid the high-end deductibles, that's something that is coming in the future, but our goal is to take baby steps, or not jump all the way there, so. That's, in a nutshell, that's where it's at. Right now then, our staff, it will cost less for them in contributions for next year, and also, if you look at opportunity costs or the costs that would have happened to go up, you know, there's a net savings of $160 this year.
A year.
A year.
Yep. So, when the insurance committee looked at this, we looked at two things, number one is the least impact on everyone involved, and then also the cost of the programs, and like Mark stated, instead of going up 7 or 9%, it actually went down a little bit, so that helps the pocketbook, and then the max amount of pockets were much better. And for the most part, I don't think a lot of people are going to be impacted, because a lot of the doctors, the way it sounded, were both Dean and Physicians Plus are all under Unity, a lot of them, so, like Mark said, only.
Especially the clinics in this area.
Yep.
And that, that's the, that's the biggest gateway.
Yeah, so unless you're going to a Dean-only.
Or, or a special, it's a real, kind of for, for whatever reason.
Yep, so. I make a motion to approve the change in health insurance providers from Dean to Physician, and Physician Plus to Unity. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Action to approve the 14, 2014-15 contracts for teachers. Motion to approve the contracts, the 14-15 contracts for teachers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
One other thing I sort of remember, when we talk about teacher contracts, this will be for their teaching assignment. The dual-curricular point altogether.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I have a motion to approve the 2014-15 appointments for support staff employees. I approve my motion to approve the 2014-15 appointments for support staff employees. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Same thing. Getting it set up.
Right, so we're, we're telling people we want them back next year and sending that message.
Other discussion?
I was gonna point out, if there's questions, a couple of our employees are probationaries, so that's the P on the, on the parts of, it may look like people are listed twice, support staff have a six-month probationary, and then after they, you know, upon recommendation, then they transition, so that's why they're printed twice, in some cases.
Okay, James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Motion to approve 2014-15 appointments for administrative assistants. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Hire Peggy.
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 Penny.
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 The administrative assistant, administrator, and human resources at a rate of $21 an hour. Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Ready to walk right in? James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. I want to approve the opening. You look great. Did great, Washington U.C. Do I have a second? Can I go?
Be second.
Discussion.
This is for a year out, you know, you approved already for this one, because they have to sign the contract with the company a year out, so they now are on their second trip, and everything's going very smoothly, they went from 12 kids, this year 16, they predict more next year, and it's like this is phenomenal experience. The only pitch that the company pays for one chaperone, we always take two, the company pays for one chaperone, and last year, because we didn't know that, the company just, at the last minute, just paid for them. This year, I think they're getting dollars from Pi, I think the parent organization, so they may just like add $5 to $10 per student to just cover it, because it's been scrambling, and they really, you know, they really feel like they should take two, whereas the company says you only need one, because they provide one person, but we feel that it's important that our kids have two of our own people, so, that's the only.
What's the cost for the chaperone?
It's, I think it's 450, but they get half of it, so I can definitely come up with $250. So we figured if 16 kids, or let's say next year, 220 kids, so we split $250 20 ways and add a little bit, you know, just so that I feel more comfortable, and they did say, Mary Kay and Dawn did say that once they got there, the people in control, I mean, they have everything, but I think it just gives a little more comfort factor for the, and for the cha, our chaperone, that there's another adult from our building. So that's the only thing that they said that they've gotta kind of figure out, because in most schools only do send one teacher, but.
Asta, how many years have they been going?
This is the second year.
This is the second.
Yeah.
I'd like.
So you guys approved it last year for, they're already going in, it's all organized in June to go, but now this is to approve for the following year, because we signed a contract with the company.
On other trips, do we cover the chaperone with the board, with the district?
Well, it, because they're in-house, that's what like Field Ecology and they do, they add like $40 per student.
Oh.
That covers for the chaperone, so.
Oh, okay.
But since this is a set price for, from this company, because it's run sponsored by the company, the company won't participate in bumping the prices differently, we would have to do that ourselves. So, we'd do like a separate ten to twenty-five dollar collection.
You're, you're doing similar to what other-
Correct.
-trips are doing.
Correct, just because it's a company that runs it, it just bump a little bit, so.
Then what you're saying is the more students that go, that offsets the individual cost.
Right, right, yeah. And, um, you know, every kid, they still talk about it, it was a really wonderful experience. They got to see sixteen sites in forty-eight hours.
Wow.
So, what happens if you start getting up, like, let's just say that this continues to escalate, and you get thirty kids, is there, do they cover them? Is it like, do they cover one chaperone for X kids?
No, they cover one chaperone for trips.
Oh, okay.
So, if we felt like it got to the point that we need, we would want to send three, we'd have to find the, you know, coverage for two. So, but, you know, our classes, so this is, this will be close to, you know, because there's a smaller class, close to, you know, almost half, not quite half, but it was, um, you know, a popular trip. And there was one conflict last year, which may, you know, cut it small, this year, there's a chunk of kids going, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. All right, future meetings, our next meeting is, um, May twelfth. And then, depending, right now, we don't need a second meeting in May necessarily.
Yeah, the only way is, well, based on the roofing, and then, that may happen next week, if, I mean, it's just based on research. Otherwise, I was planning to keep it to two meetings in May. The nineteenth, we're hoping to, you know, a couple of reasons, hoping to negotiate in May.
Oh.
You know, and just spend, spend time there, so, yeah.
And Mark and I are gonna talk about policies, if there's anything that we left undone.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Twelve was the next meeting.
Next four.
Next four, eight is the twelfth. Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
All votes in favor, I?
I.
I vote yes. Thank you.